Welcome everyone to the September 24, 2007 meeting in the Science City Commission. Will Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Jelka.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Peck.
Commissioner Purney.
Here.
Commissioner Veneer.
Here.
I'd like to invite all of you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
First item on today's agenda is the Citizens Forum. Time set aside for any citizen who would like to address the Commission on any items that are not on today's official agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward for that purpose? Seeing none, we will continue on. There are no awards and proclamations today, nor are there any public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time. So that brings us to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of September 17, 2007. Item 6.2, accept the offered utility drainage easement in the Quell Meadows Estates addition.
Any questions on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Motion is to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. That passes four to zero. So that will bring us to development business.
Item 7.1, application number Z-07-16, requesting a change in zoning district classification from C1 to C2 on property addressed at 723 South Ohio Street. Subitem 7.1A, first reading ordinance number 07-10,416.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an application that has been filed by Fred and Jackie Bailey. It's to take a property that was originally constructed as a duplex and then later used as a dental office that was purchased by them in July of this year. They purchased the property with the thought of converting it from an office to a beauty shop. They indicated they thought their realtor had told them that it was appropriately zoned. But when we met with them initially, we informed them that the property was zoned C1, which is our office zoning district, which does not allow retail businesses or shops. So they filed an application for C2 neighborhood shopping district. And the request was to go to C2 so they could lease the property for conversion to a beauty shop. We discussed with them their options for doing that, either under a straight C2 or a planned C2. They pursued the straight C2 option, meaning that when we evaluated it and the planning commission evaluated it, it had to be looked at as if any of the listed C2 uses could go there. The primary constraint on the site is that there is very limited space for parking. And what parking has been used historically is actually located on the neighboring property to the east. Again, our C1 district is really designed to be catered towards offices, professional offices, business offices, medical and dental clinics. C2 is our neighborhood, small-scale retail. And the plot plan or aerial that you see up on the -- there on the screen, there is a raised median that comes across Faith Drive here, which means you cannot make left turns onto Faith. You cannot go southbound on Ohio. So the access to the site is here and here. And the way that they have -- would need to configure the site in order to accommodate both parking and driving, that would be need to be marked for one-way traffic in some fashion. There's not much C2 in the neighborhood, but there is quite a bit of C5 zoning at the Crawford and Ohio intersection there and extending both ways on Crawford. So again, the not a lot of compatibility issues, primarily parking issues. And when we met with them and when we analyzed this from a staff perspective, it's not the uses and their compatibility so much as the uses and their need for greater parking. And that zoning at straight C2 would lead to the idea in the future that it was suitable for a wider range of uses than maybe it is. So we thought that was best accomplished by them applying for a limited planned C2 district. The planning commission considered this at September 18 meeting. No one appeared to speak at the hearing except for the applicants and their architect. At the close of the hearing, the planning commission concurred with staff's recommendation and directed the applicants to amend their application to planned C2 or limited C2, which requires an approved site plan and also allows the commission to delete potentially incompatible uses. And again, the incompatibility here is not the uses themselves, but the parking needs versus what's available. And so the planning commission recommended four conditions of approval, which would limit the uses to what is allowed there today, plus beauty shops, that the development on the property would be subject to C1 setback and development limitations, that the applicants work with the staff to develop a approved site plan for parking and circulation before they get a building permit, and that the number of styling chairs that they're allowed in the beauty shop be limited based on the number of legal parking spaces available. And it's very hard to see that this line here is a straight line. That's the property line. This notch here is a piece of paving that's accessible from this side. But the prop -- this paving here that's been utilized is actually on the Dr. Jasperson property to the east. So if we're going to utilize and count those towards meeting the parking needs here, we think there needs to be some sort of formalized arrangement. And then that would need to be recorded in some fashion so that the -- any future buyers would understand that that relationship is in place. And that wasn't the case here. There was only a handshake agreement to use those, and it didn't necessarily run with the land or to the new buyers. So that was the recommendation of the planning commission, was to go with a limited C2. And then to, depending on how the parking situation worked out, would determine the extent of the beauty shop that they could have there. Be happy to address any questions.
Questions, Mr. Andrew.
Are they asking for a planned C2 or a limited C2 or a straight C2 with those four conditions?
They applied for a straight C2. Our recommendation, the planning commission's recommendation, was to have them amend their request to a planned C2.
And they did not?
Well, this is -- they -- what we asked them to do, or suggested that they do, is that they apply for planned C2 upfront, and they did not do so. So they requested straight C2 zoning, and the planning commission felt like they couldn't recommend that. So they were agreeable to the planned C2 with these limitations, the applicants were.
Because in the planning commission minutes, they were specifically asked that.
Yes.
And they said that would be acceptable to them.
Yes.
What's the capacity of parking? How many actual parking slots do they have? And how do they park?
The...
I drove by there the other day, but because no one's there, I couldn't figure out the parking.
Their plan is that they would have two parallel spaces along here with a driving aisle.
Okay.
You can angle park in here if they formalize that arrangement with Dr. Jasperson and get three angled spaces in there. There's room for two spaces here, and then they could have some parallel parking there. The most that you could squeeze out of that would be about eight spaces if they arranged something with Dr. Jasperson.
Okay. And with eight spaces, they can have the five chairs?
They could have four chairs.
Four chairs, so it would limit it down to four.
Yes. And they indicated that they understood that, and that was workable for them. Their initial -- ideally, they'd like to have five, but there just simply isn't space for that.
So when they exit out of there, they have to go north? Is that correct?
Well, if you exit out of here, which I think the most likely circulation would be to come in on Ohio and exit on Faith, then you can come here and go north on Ohio.
Have to go north, right.
But if you're wanting to go south, then you're going to have to go
Go clear.
Through the neighborhood and to McAdams to get over to go southbound or Republic.
Okay.
Maybe there's something I'm missing here, but it appears to me that we are being asked to approve a straight C2 from a C1 to a C2. Is that not right?
The actual application that was filed by the Baileys was for C2. The recommendation that's coming to you from the planning commission would be for a planned or limited C2 with those four conditions that are on page five of the report and reflected in the ordinance that's attached to the package.
Dean, even if they had not desired to go with a planned C2 in the beginning, are you saying that at this stage in the game that the planned C2 would meet their needs? That they've acknowledged that?
They agreed that the planned C2, those conditions, were acceptable to them. I guess the analogy to this would be the -- that was most recent would be the car lot that's located at Claflin and Knight Street, where there was a request to go from C3 to straight C5 zoning. And instead of straight C5 zoning, planned C5 was approved, which allowed them to have a car lot, but didn't open that up to all the other C5 uses. So this is somewhat comparable to that.
Okay, I'd like to invite any public comment or comment from the applicants, if there is any. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission. Okay, Mr. Mayor, it looks like the planning commission has worked this thoroughly and come up with a reasonable compromise. So I've moved that the application Z-07-16, I don't have the right summary in front of me, but that the application be approved for rezoning in accordance with the proposed ordinance number 07-10416 on Lot 1, Block 5, replatted Faith Edition, going to a limited PC2 from PC1.
Second.
Okay, the motion is to approve ordinance 07-10416, rezoning a piece of property on 723 South Ohio Street from C1 to planned PC2 with the four conditions that Mr. Andrew outlined. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. That passes four to zero.
Item 7.2, application number Z-07-13, requesting a change in zoning district classification from RS to R1 on property located on the south side of East Cloud, east of Parkwood Drive. Subitem 7.2A, first reading ordinance number 07-10,417.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you. Mayor and Commissioners, this is a rezoning request for a piece of property that actually was subject to a plat, but it's a plat that dates back to 1886 for what was known as the Village of Loretto. And since that time, the Parkwood Village area has developed there directly east of Ohio. And then there's two dwellings that are on the south side of East Cloud, 1430 and 1508. And they have these long skinny bowling alley-type lots that extend from Cloud all the way back to the river. And the property that we're talking about is this large space here, plus they have contracted to purchase the backyards off these two properties here. And the agreement that they've tried to work out is that if the developers can successfully develop this property and install a sewer system, both 1430 and 1508 have septic systems that are failing and no good prospect to get connected to public sewer. So the agreement was that they were basically trading land for sewer. So the request that you have in front of you is to rezone a piece of property that's really kind of L-shaped and includes this area back here. And the property has long remained vacant, and part of that was the difficulty of coming up with a sewer solution for the property. The property itself lies within 1,000 feet of the city's flood control levee, and that means there are some restrictions on excavation within that area. Many of the subdivisions in that area have done slab-on-grade homes. The alternative to that is to come up with a special basement design that the Corps of Engineers will approve. There's a small piece in the corner here that's low and is in the hundred-year flood plain by elevation. They've got several options related to grading or filling that site to make it buildable. So it is a buildable site, and the R1 zoning would be compatible with the zoning that you have directly to the west there with the single-family homes in Parkwood Village and also residential to the north. The challenge historically has been the public utilities and services. There's a six-inch water line in Cloud. They're going to need in some fashion to bring that into this area, but they're going to find a -- need to find an area to loop it, either to this line that's in Red Fox Lane, or perhaps come back over here to Parkwood. They're in the process of trying to work those options out. They've looked at three or four different options for sewer. One included a pump station. Their preferred option that they're looking at now is to bring a sewer line from here down Cloud Street and tie it into a trunk line that's located right here. That's doable, but it's about 400 feet of off-site sewer line. They've done an analysis that seems to indicate that they can drain directly into the Old River Oxbow and not require any kind of separate detention. Cloud Street is not built to city standards, but is in reasonably good condition, and it is paved. It may be a candidate for reconstruction at some point, but right now it is suitable in terms of its paving condition. City's long-range plan has always shown this as low-density residential, so this would be consistent with that. The planning commission had a hearing on this on September 4, and there was one neighboring property owner who appeared and had some questions and comments. But the planning commission voted eight to zero to recommend approval of the R1 zoning subject to satisfactory plating of the property. And so that comes to you with a recommendation for approval. And attached is an ordinance that would approve R1 zoning on first reading subject to plating. With that, I'd be happy to address any questions.
And you've reviewed their drainage study and approved their plan to drain into that on Quist Oxbow?
That has not been approved yet. The engineering department is still reviewing that, and they will make a formal determination when they submit a final plat layout. But the engineer hired by the applicants, their conclusion was that there was sufficient capacity in the Oxbow to take the runoff directly into that without having a separate detention facility. But our engineering department is reviewing their calculations. And that will be determined at the time of the final plat.
Seeing none, I'd open it up for any public comment. If you could please proceed. Yes, if you could give us your name and address.
I was the one person from Parkwood that attended.
Give us your name and address, ma'am.
It's Shirley Drawbaugh.
Thank you.
And I live at 1833 Parkwood Drive. One of the things I would like to know is, where is this CR Development located? Where is their headquarters?
CR Development is a partnership between two Salina home builders.
Who are they?
Greg and Roger.
Well, that I know. And they are located here in -- this is their headquarters, is in Salina.
They're local builders.
One other thing on this. There seems to be a little bit of question. You were talking, I think, at the planning commission deal, that the connection with the water line would be going between my house or on my lawn, land, and the beginning of the townhouses, going out into the -- I may have this all wrong. I'd like to know.
Okay. The engineer who works for the builders said that his preferred option was to come through here and to tie a loop through here and get back to Parkwood Drive. What he's going to have to do is either show that there's sufficient easement there, which we don't believe there is, or they will have to negotiate with you and the Town Home Owners' Association to provide the necessary easement. They need 20 feet of clear space for utility easement.
Okay. Now let me pinpoint this. Is this going to be for water or for sewer?
Water. It's for water.
This engineer at our Parkwood meeting said it was for sewer. And I think that needs to be clarified with them somehow or other.
I think it does.
So this is my main worry, is this thing going through my lot? Because we have sprinkler systems located, I do, and also the Parkwood for the common areas has sprinkler systems over there. So this is going to mean a lot of tearing up and putting back together. And when I built my house, I went through all this, and I'm really not looking forward to it again. So this is my main complaint. And I just don't see why this builder can't forget about Parkwood and work out some other way of putting in water and sewer. And this is I -- I think that we are justified in -- because there are going to be two -- I would think, two houses back of -- I know there's going to be one back of my house, and I think there should be somewhat another house probably back of the four townhouses. Now, I don't know. But anyway.
Excuse me. Dean, can you show me where her house is on that map?
Yes, it's -- her house is here.
That's what I thought.
And the Town Home Association land is here. And as indicated Mrs. Drawbaugh at the planning commission meeting, approval of zoning or plating or anything does not authorize the developers to go through somebody's private property with utilities. They would still have to negotiate an easement to do that, and that's one of the reasons they were at the Town Home Association meeting, is that they were trying to persuade the association to grant them an easement.
But I'm glad to get this clarified, though. It will be a water line, not a sewer line. Because he kept talking sewer.
John, can you go to the infrastructure plan, please? I think that was number four. There -- this is, I believe you --
This is your property right here.
Right.
And their plan, this W here indicates water. They were planning to bring a water line through here, tie it over to the water line that's at Parkwood Drive.
That's the plan that they presented to us, and that's what we're holding them to.
Well, isn't that funny? Because as I said, this man was there, and he kept saying, "No, no, sewer, sewer, sewer." So that's -- I'm glad to get that pinned down, and thank you for your...
But nonetheless, they can't come into your yard or anything until they get an actual easement.
Thank you very much. I may be able to sleep tonight.
Thank you.
Now, that would be spelled out on the plat, too?
Well, what they're showing here, which they can control, this is their property here, her property, these are two home sites. They want to bring water down through an easement here. What they need to do is they need to get these owners' permission to bring it from here over to Parkwood Drive. They can't -- with the plat, all they can do is provide easements on their own property. It doesn't cloak them with the power to go onto somebody else's land. That's their jobs to tell us how they're going to make the connections, but it's up to them to persuade the owners to grant them an easement.
So Dean, would they then have to obtain that easement or permission across the property in order to get plat approval?
For their final plat, yes. They have to show how they're going to be served, and if they can't get that permission, then they'll have to go to a different option.
Okay.
Just for record, I think you'd want to continue to follow this, because today we're just voting on the zoning aspect of it.
Yes. And this is only preliminary, because they'll still have to come back with a final plat, where they answer every question on that final plat. This is still preliminary design stage.
Okay. Any additional public comment?
Could I only ask a couple...
Please come to the microphone if you would.
I don't think -- I don't even know if you're the proper people to ask these rhetorical questions. It might be the planning commission, I'm not sure.
We'll need your name and address.
Janet Stark, 1360 Parkwood. I had two questions, and for, I guess for the future. Does Salina have any interest in asking the developers to build structures that are looking toward the future in a green way, asking for environmentally plus types of building so that energy use and so on are taken into consideration? And my other question is, I heard that the schools are quite crowded around this development. Grace Stewart, I think, is quite full, and I don't know about St. Mary's. And Mr. Andrew did tell me that the school board passed on it, so they must know what they're doing. But we have no sidewalks, and Cloud has no sidewalks, and there will be -- but there are children now walking on the streets to school on Parkwood Drive. So I just thought that I would throw out those two questions. In the future, I think people want fitness-friendly neighborhoods, and you do want to walk. And Salina, I thought, might like to think about constructing more sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I'd move for approval of application Z-07-13 through ordinance number 07-10417, requesting a change in zoning from residential suburban to R1 on 9.82 acre tract of land located south side of East Cloud Street, east of Parkwood Drive.
Second. Motion is to approve ordinance 07-10417, rezoning a piece of property on the south side of East Cloud, east of Parkwood Drive, from RS to R1. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes four to one.
That passes four to one. I'm sorry, four to zero.
Four to zero. We will now move on to items of administration.
Item 8.1, resolution number 076436, revoking a permit for use of public property for purposes and directing notices of removal of the improvements made pursuant to such permit.
Mr. Gage?
Mayor and Commissioners, in 1995, the city commission granted approval for the North Salina Business Association to place an identification sign and some other improvements in a small triangular area, in the area of Broadway Boulevard, Grand Avenue, and 13th Street. This is an area that's within the work area for North Broadway project. And so the permit that was granted in '95 does basically provide that the commission has full discretion to require that-- those improvements to be removed, and will need to have those removed in order to complete the work on that project. We've attached a resolution, and what it basically does is it makes it finding that the right-of-way is required for the purposes of the project at hand. It revokes the '95 permit issued, directs that notice be given by the city engineer to the North Salina Business Association to give them an opportunity to remove whatever aspect of that they might want to remove. And then it directs that if it's not removed within that period of time, that it will be considered abandoned, and then we will actually remove it so we can complete the project. There's a picture up there, a picture in your packet as well. You can see the sign, there's a little sort of a sidewalk, it's a stamped, I believe a stamped concrete in the sidewalk that used to be yellow, Rick Road. But anyhow, the-- I want to make something clear, that the city is under no obligation to actually relocate this. If you don't want to, you don't have to. If you do, what we would recommend is that first, the folks that are interested in the North Salina Business Association try to find a location in private-- on private property. Typically, public property has utilities and some other things, and we really try to keep private signage and things like that out of there. So ideally, we'd like them to look into private property first. If there's not a location that can be found that's suitable, whether it be location, traffic hazard, or willingness by someone to offer up, you know, property for this, certainly if it's your wish, we can continue to work with them and find a-- try to find a safe location in the public right-of-way. What we would do is if we end up in the public right-of-way, would create a license agreement, which is a typical document that we use for any types of those transactions today, which would have conditions very similar to what was placed on this approval back in 1995. So with that, be happy to take questions.
Did the city maintain this little triangle?
No, it's currently the responsibility of the association.
Was the association notified of this action?
Yes, they were--
Representatives here, did they comment or anything?
They were notified of it, actually, the thought of it some time ago. It's been a discussion for a while, but they were notified of it. They're well aware that it's on the agenda for today. And I had a chance to talk with one of the representatives and explain to them that our primary action today is removal so that we can finish the project, and then that I would also ask direction from you as to whether or not you're interested in relocating that in a public area.
And it was called to my attention, they were concerned what was going to happen to their sign, and they felt that the city allowed them to do this back in 1995, and so they questioned back then. They just found out that this was on the agenda, I believe, Friday, so they were telling me that they were having a hard time locating their records.
They had-- Commissioner, they had provided some of their own records in prior conversations.
Okay.
I'm not sure which one you talked to, there are multiple members, but one of the members had found some of the records--
Okay, good.
--which was helpful for us.
Well, they were saying that-- they brought that up back in '95, that if Salina was going to need that property for growth and structure, that what was going to happen to their little sign in their park? And they were under the impression that it would be moved. So I question that now. They know it has to be removed, and they don't have a problem with that, they're just wanting to know if there's going to be a substitute location for them to put their "Welcome to North Salina" sign.
Right. And I would say, because again, under the old permit that they had, there's no obligation at all to relocate that. It simply provides you can revoke it and essentially require that to be removed. That's why, that's kind of the second part of the question, is do you want us to work with them for a spot in the public right-of-way? If you do, I would ask that they exhaust their options in the private-- on private property first, and then if those are exhausted, and if it's your desire, we can continue to work with them and find a location in the public right-of-way.
But today is just the removal of that to make way for the--
Well, yeah, that's the formal action here. I would like, though, I would like direction if it is your interest in having us work with them in the public right-of-way, whether it be as a first option or a last option.
Well, excuse me.
Sorry.
Well, I only heard from one, and I would have really appreciated if I would have heard from more of the members of the association, so I could kind of get a feel of the consensus.
I just wanted to reject, I would support alternative number one here. Any additional questions of staff? Public comment?
I agree with the mayor, the first alternative to-- would be my favorite one. And so I guess I'd move that we approve resolution number 076436, providing, actually revoking permit for use of public property for aesthetic purposes and directing notice of removal of improvements made pursuant to such permit.
Motion is to approve resolution 07-6436, revoking a permit for use of public property for aesthetic purposes and directing notice of removal of improvements made pursuant to such permit. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. That passes four to zero. Not aware of any other business, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
Okay.